Let's get started here. Okay. Called Warrior, welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners for the held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is March 10th, 2020, 2021, excuse me, due to social distancing guidelines and the regulations imposed by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on indoor gatherings, this meeting is being conducted remotely utilizing the Zoom video conference platform. Instructions for accessing the meeting and for submitting public comment were made available on the township's website in advance of the meeting. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the servicemen and women who placed themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So I'd like to entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute book of the township.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Will I oppose? Say nay. Okay, please record unanimous vote. Okay, we have a full board tonight and no substitute professionals. And I would like to announce that the Board of Commissioners conducted a special executive session meeting on February 24th, 2021 to discuss one matter of litigation and again on March 8th, 2021 as part of the regularly scheduled workshop meeting to discuss three personnel matters and three matters related to litigation. Due to limitations on the size of indoor public gatherings, all regular and special meetings of the Board of Commissioners and Township Advisory Boards will continue to occur virtually using the Zoom video conferencing platform until further notice. Meeting details and instructions on how to access meetings can be found on the Township's website in advance of each meeting. The public is now open to comments or questions from the public. The board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item now would be the appropriate time. Any questions? Do we have any emails, Brandon?
We do not, but I did see a hand really quickly go up and down for a Mr. David Kennard. Dave, if you wanted to chime in with public comment, you know, use, press that raise your hand button.
Okay, Mr. Kennard, go ahead.
Sorry, trying to do so. Yes, I don't know if this is the time or not, but I had sent an email to Michael Maxwell, Commissioner Maxwell regarding the school and school zone commission. If this is not the time, we can raise it later, but I did want to take the opportunity while they was offered.
Yeah, well, go ahead. Just ask your question and we'll see what we can do.
Yeah, the primary question is what can be done to address the traffic concerns around the new Enfield Elementary School. I understand that basically that that the township is not in charge of things like crossing guards, but there is particular danger posed to the public and especially to these young children, both at the intersection of Montgomery and Paper Mill and then over where I live at Montgomery and Bethlehem. Families that want to walk to school for the benefit of the community, for themselves and their own health, and then also for the planet are choosing to walk to school even even if they may have a bus offered, but it's the right choice for a lot of reasons. And yet it is a particularly dangerous conditions in all three places. Bethlehem Pike, as we all know, is terribly dangerous in terms of traffic and accidents. I have heard similar stories from families on Paper Mill trying to cross the road to get to the school and then along Montgomery Ave. My understanding from reading the PA state laws is that the township has the right to petition for school zones in regards to this and slowing traffic in these conditions during school times. And they also, I also understand that the precedent has been established that we had previously established the school zone around the high school after a tragic incident of a high schooler being killed in an accident. And forgive me, I don't know the details of that, but I understand that was the condition if I'm if I'm correct. And I just think that if we've done that for high schoolers, we really ought to be doing it for our kindergarten through second graders. And yeah, I'm hoping the commission can address this question and start to deal with how we can at least during school hours, even though it's a problem all day long, at least during school hours, solve some of these problems for these kids.
Without knowing the specifics, though, we can certainly reach out to the school district.
And Jared, you want me to kind of fill in?
Go ahead. Yeah, go right ahead.
During the subdivision, the land development review process for the new elementary school, the township asked specifically about school zones in that area. And the school district indicated that because of the age of the children that they were going to provide buses for the students and therefore they did not think the school zones were necessary. Obviously, you know, some folks want to walk to school and that's great, which necessitates the or possibly necessitates the need for the school zones. There is a provision that was written into the approval resolution and the approved plans whereby the school district would have to provide or fund the school zone signals if it was ever determined that they were necessary. So while we would actually own them because they'd be in our right of way, the school district has to pay for them and presumably obtain all the permitting for them because they're regulated by PennDOT. Similarly, the school crossing guards typically come as a request out of the school district because they pay for one half of the school crossing guards. And we probably weigh in on that with our traffic safety officer as to the need for them and where they would be located.
But Mike, coming out of our meeting on Monday, we had suggested to have traffic safety take a look at this, correct?
That's correct. Yep.
So it's actively moving forward with them taking a look, getting an assessment and then sort of reporting back to us.
That you're correct. The process is in motion for our traffic safety officer to evaluate the need for them. But I will be sure to give people a realistic expectation that it is not a quick process to get the signals approved by PennDOT and then placed in service. So it's very possible that it's not until sometime until next fall, maybe even midway through the fall of next year that they're placed in service.
Mike, has the school district given any recent indication about this matter? The reason I ask is because things have changed because of the pandemic, more likely to walk now than they would before. So I'm just curious, does the school district?
Other than the fact that they've been contacted by parents just as the the board has this evening, the school district was not inclined to make any changes, but I think in response to parent requests, they certainly are more open to the concept at this point.
Mike, is the first step is our internal review of the area, but then we also have the right to ask for a traffic study, don't we, from the paid for by the school district?
Yeah, that was more in line with the additional traffic and the circulation of motor vehicles than it was necessarily pedestrians. And our thoughts there were, you know, the buses and the the parent drop off, that type of thing. And clearly, the parent drop off is a mess right now, principally because of COVID. Nobody wants to put their children on the bus. So a lot of parents are driving the kids to school.
Yeah.
Which is added to the congestion. They're trying to encourage, from what I understand, more people to utilize the bus system because that apparently works well.
Hey, Mr. Kennard, does that answer your question or?
It does. It sounds like what I'm hearing from you is that we have the right, or I'm sorry, you as the commissioners have the right to request a traffic study. But anything that needs to come from the school board in terms of their requests for these zones, that is, that's coming through the school board. So parents that want these things should be communicating with the school board. Am I understanding that correctly? What is our next step as parents who want to do this safely?
You should very much communicate with the school district, whether it be through the principal at the at the school, the superintendent and/or the board.
Understood. Thank you.
But just to sort of drive the point home, David, you know, actually Commissioner Lee and I were having this very conversation about another area of the township at the beginning of the week, last week. And I, you know, I think for all of the commissioners, we all recognize the the value and the drive right now to create a very walkable township in all areas of the township. And so you know, I know for myself with three young kids, this is very, it's important to have safe routes for the kids to walk everywhere, anywhere. And so it's not going to be something that we're just going to, you know, not put some real focus on and some real effort on. So I want you to know that your message is is heard loud and clear.
Appreciate that. Yeah, it's yeah, we all, we all know what Bethlehem Pike is like and we all know what Paper Mill is like. And I just think that especially with the construction of Enfield, which only increases the traffic to Montgomery Ave, the pedestrian traffic. Already families were walking there for Cisco and to check out the llamas and all that kind of thing. We just need more. Yeah, we need more walkable communities. So I'm glad to hear you guys are talking about that and I will address this along with other parents to the school board and try and push for change in that direction. Thank you.
That's great.
Can you tell us what your address is or just your street for the minute?
Yeah, I live, I live midway down Gordon Lane.
Okay.
And so I walk my boys to school. Unfortunately, I actually walk in the path of traffic because I want to slow traffic down while my kids are on the sidewalk and, you know, you got to do what you got to do to keep your kids safe. And
Yeah, you do. You do. But let me just suggest to you, you not do that because they also need a father.
Okay, understood, understood. I just, I just really want that situation to change and I think we all do. And yeah, let's, we'll focus on that and what we need to do to make our community safer. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Suzie, you have a question?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, my name's Suzie. For the record, I'm at 8323 St. My name's Suzie Ratsel. I would like to echo the concerns of Mr. Kennard as well and also curious if just as a matter of course, if there are any emergency type powers that could be used to expedite that request. If like Mike Taylor did say, perhaps it's that seems like a long time to wait, just as a bystander and community member for for that process to go through. And knowing that it's obviously affected by COVID as well. That's my only commentary as to that. And then what I would like to discuss, if this is the right time, I did send an email to all of you individually, did not necessarily put it on the agenda, and I'll know to do that for next time, about addressing Asian American hate that is ongoing across the country. And I was wondering if it was possible to offer up a resolution as a township to speak on this. I bring this up because I was roped into a statement, a conversation with county leaders here in Montgomery County to make a statement against this type of discrimination. And I thought I would draft a statement that you could use and make a resolution with and or maybe read the statement for the record. I'll bring that up to your attention and see what the next steps for that would be if you would like to do that.
So I, so my, my, I guess my comment on that, I read, I read the statement and it's, it's clearly an important issue. It's, you know, the statement is sort of divorced from any sort of, like, there's, there's, I'm not aware of any events or anything, but if we could, you know, if you want to bring it up at our next workshop and, you know, we can discuss incidences or situations where, you know, this kind of thing has happened. So we can, you know, bring it in front of the public and then if we make a statement, it relates to, you know, something that's, you know, that people are educated about. That would be my, my comment, but.
First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Rosalva for sending out that statement. It was a very powerful and poignant statement and much needed. As well, you know, the incidences have been on the rise so much here in Montgomery County that and Philadelphia, that the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission is having a town hall meeting addressing the issue tomorrow night. It's called Stop the Hate. That is being sponsored by the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission. And I think that Ms. Rosavon's, Ms. Rosava, Ratsavat, excuse me for butchering your name. But I think the statement that you sent to us is very poignant. And I think it is, it it parallels the same statement that this board issued a statement during the issues where Black Lives Matter issue was, was had to be addressed by this board. So I would strongly recommend that each of the commissioners sort of get behind and back are in this statement. Because this is the time when we need leadership in the community and coming from this board and the support of the terrorist acts toward Asian Americans should be addressed. And the issues are occurring here in Montgomery County for the record. So you should be, you should know about that. And like I said, it will be addressed by the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission tomorrow on a town hall at 7:00 PM. The information, I can make sure that all of the commissioners have that if you have the opportunity to join in. Thank you.
And I just follow up with Commissioner Graham and agree forcefully with his sentiment and you know, something I'm actually pretty proud about this board that we have come out very vocally and very forcefully, unfortunately, on several occasions over the past year when hateful speech, hateful incidents have occurred all over the country. And I think it really, it sets a precedent that we don't tolerate it here and that we don't, we stand against it. And I do think that we should continue along those lines in this case too, but I strongly support what was raised.
Barrett, it looks like David put his hand back up.
David, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to put my hand back. I don't know how that happened. Sorry.
Sorry, sorry.
And Suzanne, put it back up.
Okay.
Good.
Hi, I just, I appreciate that. And I just to to Commissioner Sandish's point, I just want to point out that I'm hopeful that we can be proactive on this if possible. I think it would be fresh for the county as well. And I only know this because I've been interacting with these other leaders, mayors and what have you in other communities in the in the county who are looking for that leadership. I just think it'd be wise and valuable for the township to make that proactive statement if possible. I have emailed that out. I'm happy to read it if you'll allow me. And if not, you know, I will hand aside and let you decide what to do next.
Okay. Well, if you want to read it, by all means, go ahead. I would say that the the process or the best process would be that if if we decide we want to do this and I, you know, I don't see any reason not to, you know, I would read the statement, you know, at our next workshop and we would, you know, vote to put it on our website, maybe publish it. I know we could certainly try to publish it in the in the Chesapeake local, something like that is what we did last time. And and also, if you want to come to our workshop and, you know, provide just some background to this sort of thing, you know, that would also be very helpful too. So.
Why don't I just, if you don't mind, I'll take just two seconds to read this and then I agree, I'll come to the workshop and make that happen if you're able to do it sooner. I would appreciate it. I will say this is really decent and just came to, you know, something that's.
And the only reason why I would, I would suggest that we would, you know, the only thing about doing it sooner than later is that we wouldn't have the opportunity like this in a public meeting to to make the statement. I mean, we could certainly put it on our website or something like that, but you know, not a lot of people are going to see it as opposed to actually getting in front of everybody and reading it and it's on TV and all that sort of thing, you know, so.
Okay, well, uh, what do you?
But go ahead, read it. Go ahead and read it and then we'll, you know.
Let me know what to do next. And then I, before I conclude, I just want to echo the sentiments of Mr. Kennard. I know it's been major talk among all of the parents. What's been going on with the with the schools. So for this instance, to our residents, neighbors and friends, since the start of the COVID-19 pandemic, we have watched as discriminatory and xenophobic rhetoric, verbal harassment, physical violence has increased against Asian American and Pacific Islander individuals and families in our Commonwealth and across the country. Our township is comprised of many diverse communities, including those from the Asian American and Pacific Islander diaspora. We want to make it clear to our neighbors that Springfield Township is a place that supports and nurtures the safety and security of all people. The basic ability to be free from any crime against one's personhood is inherent to building better communities. And one act of xenophobic discrimination negatively impacts us all. No matter who you are, the victims of those bigoted acts and attitudes are our neighbors and friends, family members and loved ones. And as such, we stand united with our Asian American and Pacific Islander community members and categorically condemn any act of discrimination or violence against any person particularly born out of xenophobic and racist views. We will continue to work on combating all harassment and discrimination, keeping the recent vulnerability of the Asian American community in mind. Hate has no home in Springfield Township. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll just add, you know, I agree with it's not a silly initiative.
Breaking up badly. I can't even hear him.
It was really good, Peter, admitting I said.
Well, I'm sorry. Yeah. Maybe I'm going deaf. I don't know.
I voiced my support.
Oh, good. Excellent. Yes, I think we all do.
He needs, he's in, he needs an official Jeff Harbison all good sign, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so I guess with no more questions or comments, then we'll just move on to the committee reports. And I will kick it off. Sorry. Sorry about that. Okay, let's see. First, concerning land development of the C Vic LLC in compliance with section 512.1 of the Pennsylvania Municipality Planning Code, I move that the Board of Commissioners waive the formal land development review process for C Vic LLC 1101 to 1121 Ivy Hill Road Winmore in order that the applicant may subdivide the interior of an existing warehouse building in order to create two leasable tenants tenant spaces. As a result of the division or lease of space, no additional square footage has been added to the building. And the applicant has successfully petitioned the local zoning hearing board to obtain relief necessary for all uses on the property. In addition, all building and fire codes have been addressed to the satisfaction of the building inspector and fire marshal. So that is my motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Here we go. Okay. Any comments or questions on the motion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Say nay. Okay, please record unanimous vote. Okay, next, concerning the Burke Brothers Landscaping Land Development in compliance with section 512.1 of the Pennsylvania Municipality's Planning Code, I move that the Board of Commissioners waive the formal land development review process for Burke Brothers Landscaping Contractors, Inc., 7630 Cheltenham Avenue, Winmore. The subject of the land development is the construction of a 1,916 square foot addition to the second floor of an existing warehouse located at 7630 Cheltenham Avenue, also known as Montgomery County Tax Map parcel number 52-00-03100-007. As part of the waiver, the applicant shall be required to relocate the existing concrete barriers and plant additional landscaping at the corner of Mermaid Lane and Cheltenham Avenue and to work with the township to secure an easement through the former Crescent Railroad property in order to facilitate the construction of a recreational trail. So that is my motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion?
I just have one point of clarity here. Would he be making the these changes and this planting on property he owns or is that, is that the property of the subject to the lease with with Pico?
The the concrete barriers are located on Pico property and we're asking them to work with Pico to move them back away from the street line so that additional landscape screening could be put in front of them, but out of the the clear site triangle at the intersection.
Yeah, but that would be, he'd be putting this, these plantings on Pico property?
For which he has a lease. Yes.
And he's allowed to do it.
Yeah. It's, and it's, and it's a tricky situation as we talked about in the planning commission, because if you take all the vegetation down, which was the first recommendation, then it leaves all those barriers open for graffiti artists to come along and do whatever they like. And so a better idea would be to move them back and put, you know, some tasteful vegetation in front of them and discourage.
I agree. I agree. I just didn't didn't know whether he could, you know, if if he had that power under his lease to do that.
Yep, Pete, the the concrete barriers were put there by Pico to prohibit dumping. So, you know, if you could put some kind of landscaping in front of it, it further, you know, hides whatever's back there and the ability to dump.
Okay, okay. And Kevin, Kevin has his hand up. Kevin, go ahead.
Where is he? He's still muted.
And can you hear me?
Yep, there we go.
It's my understanding through the Springfield Town Police that when we met and went over this, that I'm not in control of the Pico barriers. I don't own that land. It's up to them to say that they'll move it back. I will gladly work with them to help move them back. But planting a vegetation in front of that is not going to help. And the police, which I thought you had the recommendation, would suggest that we don't put any vegetation in front of it, just based on the fact that that would in would would inhibit the the sightlines that they need from the corner of Mermaid Lane onto Cheltenham Avenue. So it would be moving the barriers back, but not planting vegetation in front of them, just keeping them low and keeping them open. The more we hide someone from sitting there waiting for the bus or whatever they may be doing and spray painting that, that's, that's, the more open it is, the better it is. Because when we first took that property 20 years ago, there was vegetation. Nothing was cut there. Pico didn't maintain the grass there. And that's when we saw more vandalism, more, we saw more problems when we leased the leased the Pico property and also the spray painting on on those barriers.
Well, so where do we go? I mean, I know that the, in the planning commission, they, we first talked about taking the vegetation down and then somebody said, oh, you know, if you take it all down, they're going to be spray painted. And so we should leave some vegetation, some, some low growing vegetation in front of the barriers. And everybody thought that was a good idea. And I don't, I don't recall hearing anything about what the police chimed in on and.
Well, do you have the report in front of you? We do have it.
Do you have it?
We do have it. It says, after reviewing the intersection, my recommendations are to turn the concrete barriers around to the graffiti is facing in. That'll be a temporary solution. And move them back eight feet from the roadway to be in line with the utility poles on Cheltenham Avenue. This will give it a cleaner look and improve the site distance. Planting taller landscaping behind the wall along Cheltenham Avenue approximately 20 feet north from the existing plantings and 60 feet along Mermaid Lane will soften the view from the road.
and 60 feet along Mermaid Lane will soften the view from the roadway.
Okay. Well, that's two different things. We're not planning anything in front of the barriers. That's, they're talking about behind the barriers to maintain the sightline from the right turn or left turn from Mermaid Lane. Not planning something in front of the barriers. And again, this property is not my property. It's Pico's property. And I've worked closely with Pico for 20 years. I'll do whatever I can. We'll turn them around. And we'll see what happens.
I, I agree with you that it's not your property, but you have a lease with Pico on the property and you utilize it for the exterior storage for your business. That's the thing that we're trying to screen from the public view.
Okay, that's fine, but not in front of the barriers on the planting. That's what I want to be clear because I'd rather have it clean and clear so no one can do anything in front of the, in front of the barriers. Even if we maintain the grass in front of that, I'm fine with that.
Bear, do you want to amend your motion to have the landscaping behind the barriers then?
Okay. I mean, if that's okay with everybody else, I mean, it's.
That's fine.
You know, okay, fine. All right. So I will amend that. My, and then my motion to, uh, to state that the, uh, the vegetation will be planted behind the barriers, not in front of the barriers.
And, um, Mr. President, just as a point of clarification regarding the trail. And along these similar lines, just to clarify, the applicant doesn't own the land, but as Lisi could certainly be an impediment to the trail. Um, and so the agreement that we have is that, that they would work with us on the trail, but they're not going to be an impediment. And, and Pico, as far as I understand, is not going to be an impediment either. Do I understand that correctly?
That's my understanding.
Yes. Okay.
So. Okay, so the, um, the motion has been made and do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, then all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Hey, please record, record a unanimous vote. Okay, thank you. And then next, uh, resolution number 1524 concerning Chase Bank at 1400 Bethlehem Pike. I move that the board of commissioners adopt resolution number 1524, a resolution granting preliminary final land development approval for the property located at 1400 Bethlehem Pike Flower Town. The subject of the land development is the repurposing of an existing retail paint store for use as a bank with drive-through automated teller machine. As part of the redevelopment project, several existing parking spaces located on the north side of the property will be removed and converted into a rain garden for stormwater management purposes. In addition, new streets and landscaping will also be installed. A six-foot-high fence will be erected on the east side of the property to screen the adjacent residential property. And the Bethlehem Pike driveway will be reconfigured for egress only with pavement markings and signage added to prohibit left turns. So that is my motion. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote. Okay, and that concludes my report. And next we will move to Commissioner Harbison, the chairman of internal affairs and library committees.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item four is the March bill listing. I move that the board of commissioners approve the February check reconciliation in the amount of in the March bill listing in the amount of $401,743.94. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any questions or comments on the, uh, motion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Harbison. Next, we will move to Commissioner Wilson, the chairman of Cultural and Environmental Resources Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a report and I have one resolution. The recycling report for the month that during the month of February 2021, Springfield Township residents recycled 172.57 tons of materials with a householder participation rate of 61.6%. The net cost for the month was $28,393.31. The participation rate was impacted by the two snow events and one holiday that forced the weekly collection of recyclables, uh, on three dates. So that's why the, the rate dropped down to 61.6%. So I have a resolution number, uh, 1525, the Wissahican Clean Water Partnership. Springfield Township, along with all of the other municipalities located in the Wissahican Creek watershed, is mandated by the Environmental Protection Agency to perform water quality improvement activities that are intended to reduce phosphorus and sediment within the watershed. In 2018, the municipalities located in the watershed formed a coalition via an intergovernmental agreement to develop an alternative to the Environmental Protection Agency's phosphorus-based total maximum daily load plan to improve water quality within the Wissahican Creek watershed. The current intergovernmental agreement expires March 31st, 2021. So I move that the board of commissioners adopt resolution 1525, a resolution authorizing the appropriate township officials to execute an extension to the 2018 slash 2019 intergovernmental agreement with other municipal counties with, 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 with other Montgomery County and Philadelphia County municipalities and four wastewater treatment plan operators to complete a water quality improvement plan as an alternative to the Environmental Protection Agency's phosphorus-based total maximum daily load plan for the Wissahican Creek watershed. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, any questions or comments on the motion?
Commissioner Wilson, do, do you think that we need to, um, um, explain any of that?
More explanation? Commissioner Cobb?
No, no.
As I could.
It's, it was a very, it was an amazing stab at it. Um, no, just it's such a, a wonky description for.
It is. It is. Yeah.
I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm never ceased to be, um, concerned, I think, by the long-term liability that this, this whole thing has. And I, I don't think that we can kind of, uh, stress it enough, uh, sort of reiterate kind of what this all means in kind of layman's terms.
Yeah. Okay, I'll take a quick stab at it. Okay, so for almost three years now, this, this consortium has been working together to come up with a, a plan, the alternative water quality plan that is not solely based on the EPA's determination that phosphorus is the only problem here. There was an extensive study done by Temple University. The Pew, the Pew charitable trust people gave the group over a million dollars to do this research. Temple did an admirable job and we, and we as the group, and like I said, 14 municipalities for water treatment plants haven't submitted a preliminary plan to EPA and DEP for their review. We, and this was the end of, uh, the kind of midsummer last year. So we, we got kind of a lukewarm response to the plan. They had a lot of questions. And over the last, uh, six months, five, six months, we've been trying to explain it better to them. And we think we are making progress. But the, the grand concept here is that, uh, the study that Temple concluded, stated that the, the real big contributor to the, to the unhealthiness of that creek was primarily sediments, sediment in, in the water. And it was the sediment that was really killing the microinvertebrates, which are the, which are the, the smallest little entities in the, in, in the water, in the creek there that everybody else lives on. So, so the, the, the plan, the big plan is for everybody to, to do whatever they can to slow down the amount of particulates that we discharge into the creek. And the, the, uh, you know, that is going to involve, uh, uh, a lot of work with regard to improving detention basins, retention basins, you know, store, other stormwater control projects. And it's going to take, you know, the plan is probably going to take 20 years to implement. And so, and so this agreement, uh, which is expiring, and we really have no choice. We have to, we have to sign this because we've been, you know, we've been doing this for three years. So if we don't, we don't continue, we're kind of, you know, just flushing all that work, our, our part of all that work down there. Down the, uh, down the toilet there. But, uh, so, I mean, that's.
But at the end of the day.
Yeah.
Um, i- if the EPA decides that, that our study was, you know, either way, the EPA, the edict is going to come down from on high that we need to do something in terms of remediation, some sort of cost. We're trying to mitigate that and, and lower that cost through this study. But it, but it's sort of out of our hands as far as it'll come down from mom and dad federal government and say, look, you guys need to do this.
Well, we're hoping that our input will, will color their, their decision, you know? I mean, at this point in time, all they're talking about is basically phosphorus, you know? And, and, uh, the group and the science does not lead us in that direction. And, and so we're hoping that we're going to be able to talk them into this alternative plan, which is, is going to require us to do probably a, a lot more, uh, physical changes to the way that we manage store water, um, going forward. And, and that's, that's going to be the expensive part. Because, uh, you know, we're still working on what the appropriate model should be and we're still, uh, you know, tweaking the, tweaking the plan, but, uh, you know, it's, it's not going to come cheap and, um, and, and, and it's going to potentially, uh, you know, have a very, very significant effect on communities that are so, so built out, you know, and were developed, uh, you know, so many years ago. I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's a lot different for the outer communities where they have more land to work with. I mean, you know, we're basically the, the inner ring suburb and, you know, been being developed, you know, in, in, in fairly intensively since the, uh, you know, the, the 50s, the 40s, the 50s, the 60s, the 70s, you know, so we have, we have very, we have not a lot of, uh, a ground to work with, not big bits of ground to work with. So, so, um, you know, it has the potential of, of, of impact, I think has a potential impacting us a lot more significantly than some of the other communities. But we're, we're trying, we're trying, and this, what this agreement is going to work towards is to try and get a balanced approach to those, uh, costs and those improvements. And along with, uh, you know, uh, getting the, uh, DEP to finally swallow them all too. So that's.
That's.
Peter, if this partnership had never formed, we have ended up at some point with some EPA mandate, uh, for remediation that likely would have been more focused on phosphate, whether it's right or wrong.
Probably yes. Yes.
Peter, if I could chime in just a little bit, you know?
Go ahead.
As Commissioner Wilson pointed out, you know, we're, we're talking about two different, yet interrelated issues. The one being, uh, the EPA DEP mandate of is it or is it not phosphorus that's contributing to the water quality? They say it's phosphorus. We have other ideas. And then the other part of this is, you know, the, these mandates are going to come, you know, there's, there's no, no avoiding them. And the, the question we have before us or before you is whether we do it alone or if we try to work with our neighbors to, to deal with it holistically as an entire watershed. And what this partnership is doing is, uh, attempting to do the holistic approach. We're all individually, each municipality in the watershed is going to be faced with these, uh, with these regulations, which will come at a, a steep price. What this partnership is you doing or attempting to, like I said, is utilizing our collective, uh, power, our collective resources, our collective know-how to kind of ease the burden on all of us while dealing with it on a more holistic level.
Because remember, we as the township submit, I believe every five years, a new MS4 pro, uh, plan to EPA for their review approval. If, if, if we don't do that, or if they don't like our MS4 program, or if they don't think that our MS4, MS4 program is really making any difference, they can just, they can just deny us permits to, to do anything else, to build anything else. You know, they can just pull, basically pull the plug on us. So it, it's, it's something we, something we have to do. But the, the scope of it has yet to be fully defined.
And, and all the other municipalities are all on board with this? Nobody's opted out at this point, you don't think?
Cheltenham withdrew from the consortium, but that was primarily because their contribution to the Wissahican watershed was only about two or three percent and they didn't want to pay the fees.
Yeah.
Everybody else, everybody else has, has weathered the storm.
Good.
But it's not going to be cheap.
Yeah.
It's not going to be cheap.
One way or the other, it's not going to be cheap.
One, we are one way or the other. Yeah. The problem is that the stream is unfortunately greatly impaired. Greatly impaired.
Do you have a, a motion and you have a second?
Yes, and we had that. Okay, so, um, okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
That was worthy of being flushed out. Poor choice of term, but.
Though again, Mike, your, uh, your written explanation was, was, was a real valiant.
And tried to save some time.
A real highbrow around here.
So thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my reports and my motions.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Okay, next we will move on to Commissioner Graham, the chairman of Parks and Recreational Resources Committee. You're, you're muted.
Yeah, I have done. So I'm sorry about that. Uh, I just have one announcement, uh, for my report this evening, Mr. President. Um, and it's concerning, uh, the Narcan event. The Springfield Township Opioid Action Committee will be hosting a drive-through Narcan distribution event in condun, in conjunction with State Senator Art Haywood and the Springfield Township Board of Commissioners at the Springfield Community Senator on Saturday, March the 27th. The event will be held from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, rain or shine, and is part of National Drug and Alcohol Facts Week, which runs from March the 22nd to the 28th. The Narcan kits will be available on a first come, first served basis. Each kit will include a two-pack of Narcom, I mean, Narcan nasal spray as well as instructions on how to administer Narcan and recognize the signs of opio, opioid overdose. Narcan is a medically, medical medication designed to rapidly reverse opioid overdose. It is an opioid antagonist, meaning that it, it binds to opioid receptors and can reverse and block the effects of other opioids. It can very quickly restore normal respiration to a person whose breathing has slowed or stopped as a result of overdosing with heroin or prescription opioid pain medications. Um, that is my announcement, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham. Okay, next we will move on to.
You got to hand up.
There we go. Okay, Ms. Sens, go ahead.
Hi.
Ask a question.
You know, I couldn't go without, out talking. I just wanted to add really quick with what Eddie had to say is that we've gotten all the okays from Senator Haywood in the county. And I will be sending, if I haven't already, all of you to finalize, um, our social media, Facebook posts and Instagram, if you can post it. I know, I know Jim Lee will post it on on your email. I can also send you a PR announcement if you just want to do it in text. And if anybody wants, we'll be out Saturday posting in businesses, et cetera, posting flyers. If anybody would like some flyers, just email me and let me know, and I can drop some off to you. But thank you for all your support in this. I really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Okay, so moving on to Commissioner Maxwell, the chairman of our Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two things this evening. The first is a police officer appointment. This appointment has come up this evening because our candidate last month had turned down our offer for another municipality. So with that being said, I move that the Board of Commissioners extend a conditional offer of employment to Jennifer Lynn Lithwinowitz of Harleysville, PA, as a probationary police officer with the Springfield Township Police Department. The offer of employment is conditioned upon this Lithwinowitz successfully completing a medical and psychological examination and shall become effective March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty one. Ms. Lithwinowitz is a twenty twenty graduate of the Montgomery County Police Academy. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Next item I have is Resolution number one five two six, Emergency Operations Plan. Local emergency management plans are required to be updated every two years. The framework of the plan rarely needs amendment, but the resources and contact portions of the plan do require review and updating. Recently, the Springfield Township Emergency Operations Plan was updated by the township's emergency management staff and was reviewed and approved by Montgomery County. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution number one five two six, a resolution adopting the January two thousand twenty one Emergency Operations Plan.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion?
I I just have a comment on that, Mr. President. As we discussed in our past meeting this past Monday, my, I I we hope update our snow removal facilitators, because I know this past winter, a lot of our senior residents had contacted me concerning a snow removal explicitly after the our Township Public Works Department, which does a fantastic job of keeping our streets clean. Sometimes in that process, as you know, it blocks some driveways. For those senior residents, we hope to update our list by next year. Hopefully, we won't need it again this season, this season. But by next year, we will have snow removal contractors or or people that will be available for those seniors to contact this township, and we can recommend contractors to you to have that snow removed from the bottom of your driveway and your actual driveway. Thank you.
Thank you. That sounds great.
If I might, Mr. President, just be clear, we won't be recommending, but we may offer a list of potential contractors that they can choose from. We can't recommend any one over another.
Yeah, I understand that. Okay.
Yeah, because you can't come after us, guys.
All right. Okay, so let me see. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
That concludes my report for tonight.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Maxwell. So next we will move on to Commissioner Cobb, the chairman of our zoning committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. And March has lined up to be a very busy month for the zoning hearing board. And that meeting will take place on Monday, March twenty second at seven PM. The meeting will be conducted via the Zoom virtual meeting platform in which to receive testimony on the following applications. First one being a request filed on behalf of Saint Genevieve's School Church and School located at twelve twenty five Bethlehem Pike. The applicant has requested a twelve-month extension on the approval granted by the zoning hearing board from Monday, April twenty seventh, twenty twenty. The extension has been requested due to an appeal of the zoning hearing board decision currently pending with the Commonwealth Court of Pennsylvania. The next application is from McKenzie and Scott Ashton, owners of the property located at seventy nine College Ave in Flower Town. And the applicants have requested a dimensional variance from section one one four dash one three one of the Springfield Township zoning ordinance. The applicants seek approval to locate an eighty-square-foot shed in front of the existing single-family dwelling. The proposed shed will be sixty-eight plus feet from the front property line and at least seven feet from the side property line. The applicant filed this request due to the fact that existing house has a rear yard of three feet, eight inches. The next application is from Desiree Presley and Michael Arselenian, owners of the property located eighty one oh two MacArthur Road in Windmore. This property is requesting a dimensional variance from section one one four dash five four. The applicant seek approval to construct in addition to the existing single-family dwelling that will encroach into the required side yard setback. The addition is proposed to reduce the side yard setback to twelve feet instead of the required twenty-three feet. And the final application is from Barbara and Stephen Bell, the equitable owners of the property located at forty-six West Wisahickin Avenue in Flower Town. This property is known as parcel five two zero zero dash one eight eight seven dash four zero zero one. And the applicants have requested a dimensional variance, seeking approval to construct in addition to the existing single-family dwelling that will be in line with the home that has side yard setback of six feet, two inches. The side yard setbacks are required to be one of a minimum of ten feet and an aggregate of twenty-five feet. This property has one side yard setback of six feet, two inches, and the other of ten feet, nine inches. Copies of the application packets are available for review in the community development office during normal business hours at the township building. And again, these applications will be heard over Zoom on March twenty second at seven PM. And that's my motion.
Thank you. Is that a motion or is that just a?
That's that's my announcement.
Okay, there we go. Okay, great. Thanks. Okay. Yep, so if anybody has any concerns or wants to voice support for any of those projects, show up at the zoning hearing meeting. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Cobb. And last but not least, we will go to Commissioner Lee, the chairman of Public Works and Facilities Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are you hearing me a little better now?
Yeah, we can hear you. Yep, that sounds great. Yep.
The two items this evening, first is Resolution number fifteen twenty seven. Montgomery County Community Development Block Grant Program provides funding to local municipalities to complete projects that address the following national objectives. Number one, low and moderate income benefit. Two, elimination of slum or blight. And three, address an urgent community need. Montgomery County will be accepting municipal applications through April ninth, two thousand twenty one, for projects to be funded in two thousand twenty two. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution number fifteen twenty seven, a resolution authorizing an application to twenty twenty one Montgomery County Community Development Block Grant Program for the project known as the seventeen twenty five Walnut Avenue Blight Remediation Project. Funding from the project will be utilized to remove the former industrial buildings located at the former Tank Car Corporation of America property in order for the site to be redeveloped into a public park. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And my second item, undercover memo of February twenty second, two thousand twenty one. Donald G. Siriani, Jr. announced his intention to retire as the township's Public Works Director this summer. Mr. Siriani began his career with the Springfield Township in June nineteen seventy-two as a part-time seasonal employee, was hired as a full-time employee in nineteen seventy-five. He was quickly promoted to foreman in nineteen seventy-six, the year I was born. And in nineteen eighty-six, Mr. Siriani was promoted to the Assistant Director of Public Works. Don has served as the Director of Public Works Department since January twenty thirteen. The Board of Commissioners plan to recognize Mr. Siriani's forty-nine years of service to Springfield Township community in a formal manner in the coming months. Director of Public Works is a complex position requiring a combination of construction acumen, fiscal knowledge, public safety, project and human resource management and logistics. Due to the specialized nature of this position, the Board of Commissioners finds it appropriate to engage the services of an organization familiar with conducting executive searches to assist with recruitment and selection of its next Public Works Director. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners engage the services of the Lafayette College Minor Center for State and Local Government to assist Springfield Township with the selection and recruitment of a new Public Works Director. Cost of the services shall be ninety-five dollars per hour and shall not exceed five thousand dollars. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion?
I think the comment is that we really owe Mr. Siriani a huge debt of gratitude for his lengthy service here. And and just so the public understands, this is the guy who makes make sure that when it snows, you know, you can still drive around the township. And he picks up your trash, he picks up your recycling. You know, this is a this is a key, key, key position and a huge loss for the township. We only we only hope that we can find somebody nearly as good as he's been for for those last forty-some years. So, well, we all say thanks.
Yeah, let me just point out, as we were getting ready to start this meeting, I forwarded a complaint to him. It took five minutes before he got back. And I learned not to send him stuff in the evenings on the weekend and Mr. Taylor, because they respond right away. So.
And just to piggyback on what Commissioner Wilson was saying, just to, you know, further drive home the the point. You know, when I think particularly back on some of the recent storms we had, there were very, very long snowstorms that extended for hours and hours and hours. And not only was he managing clearing the streets, but also then getting a lot of times those same crews back out on the road to pick up trash and recycling. Just, you know, with along the same shift. And so I think one of the great things about Springfield Township is, you know, those those amenities like clean streets and clear streets and even amidst a pandemic, it's just it is an extraordinary loss. And the institutional knowledge that someone with that length of tenure brings to a position like that really is very hard to replace. And that, you know, in fact, that he's just a tremendous guy. So I'm sure that the accolades will continue for a while as we look to try to replace him, but it will be a huge loss for the township.
Yep.
And he puts out fires. He's a
He's a fireman, too, yeah.
Fantastic guy.
Right.
Fantastic personality, always has a smile on his face.
Yep.
And public works and making sure that the safety of this township has always been the pinnacle of his career, and he will be sorely missed. And I'm proud to call him my buddy. So.
Yeah. And, you know, when Santa Claus isn't available, he comes down your chimney.
Plus, he can drive all the trucks, too. Any truck in the fleet, you can get behind the wheel.
Okay, well, thank you. So that was a motion, right? And so all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Please signify a unanimous vote.
No, it was six, one.
Six, one? Okay, I'm sorry. All right. All right. Okay, well, that concludes our committee reports, and we will now go back to the public portion of our meeting. The board is again open to comments or questions from the from the public. So if you have any comments or questions, now would be the appropriate time to make those questions or comments. I hear none. We have no emails, so I will then entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Thank you. Any seconds?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote, and we will see you next time.